The time is five thirty on Monday, September twenty fifth, and I'd like to call this work session to order. Up first are city updates. Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. City Council Mayor Grados. Our very brief updates this evening. It's a it's a important work session and a long city council meeting. Um, the only items I wanted to bring to council's attention is the ARPA updates for this evening. As two of them are in resolution in the first on the third on first reading. Uh, the first resolution is the real time crime center in the amount of one thousand, one million, five hundred thousand. If approved by city council this evening, those funds will be allocated to the um, to the city police department and spent from within the city. They don't do. They do not go externally. Um, the second item is also within the city. It is on the consent agenda for the twenty five thousand dollars allocated to Parks Department. And it will cover the cost of the Mitchell Park mural from Eric Saracino. That includes a personal service contract for him to take the lead on the instruction and community uh connections and involvement out at Mitchell Park. And the third ARPA um item on the agenda this evening is the nine hundred thousand dollars um to award neighbor works of Southern Colorado for the infrastructure improvements for their affordable project, um housing project on the west side. Um, it will be on second reading and I it I will invite them next um on the the next meeting for any sort of additional comment or to answer questions in the public hearing. And that concludes the city updates this evening. Do you have any direction or comments for me?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Questions from council? Ms. Solano, I know that that Creek Week is coming up. Does the city plan on helping to do a cleanup during Creek Week or having a team of employees or?
I don't know that we initiated an employee team, but I do know that many different employees do go out and participate. So I'll call um, the mayor meets with the directors on Tuesday afternoons tomorrow. So we'll get that update and send that out to everybody.
Yeah, that would be great. I I have heard from our um organizers of the Creek Week, our friends over there that they're needing more teams. So perhaps that would be a good community service project for employees.
And the mayor has the rest of the updates about the upcoming October cleanup events for tonight in commentary.
Mayor?
Um, it'll be commentary through the meeting.
In commentary. Okay. Questions from the city. See you then. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Solano, for those updates. We look forward to hearing the update about the team up to cleanup events during mayor's commentary. We're moving right along in our agenda. So up up next are our friends from the Director of Government Affairs for Comcast. Can I have Mr. Amela to the um podium, please, to talk about a Comcast overview update?
Here?
Yeah.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay? All right. Well, thank you for having me. I think this is the clicker, right? So just go ahead and go. Okay, great. Well, thank you for having me today. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to to me about what Comcast is doing in the community. Um, I know I only have fifteen minutes, so I'll try to move right through this uh quickly. But um a little bit on the agenda here is really three things that I would like to talk about today. Um, it is our uh introduction to Comcast, who we are as a company. Um, talking about the brilliant uh network as well that we call our brilliant network upgrades to it. And then really going in and talking about digital equity um here, uh what that we're doing here at Comcast. So who we are as a company, um we've came a long way uh from just being a single uh cable system operator into a leader in world of entertainment and and technology. So I want to kind of, I wanted to show, you know, the different parts of our business and who we are and 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 what we offer here uh in Pueblo. So first, uh Xfinity. Um, Xfinity is the name of our residential products. Uh, we're one of the nation's largest providers of phone, video, and internet. And we also are the nation's largest provider of of our hotspots uh with over about twenty two million of those throughout the communities we serve. Also, we have Comcast Business, which is a different part of our business. It's, we offer business-grade services to uh to meet the diverse ma- demands of the business community um with with uh with a tremendous support behind that. We also have Sky. Sky is a different, another part of our business. Uh, it's Europe's leading uh uh media and entertainment company. We have about twenty three million subscribers uh through our Sky uh partners, through our Sky services. And then lastly, we have NBC Universal. NBC Universal, um, we have a valuable portfolio of news and entertainment and TV networks as well as our uh Universal pitchers and Universal Studios theme parks that we have uh in 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 the United States as well. And then off to the right, you could see the content that we own as well. Um, Peacock, which is our streaming service, some of the TV networks. And one I do want to point out is Effective. Effective is here is also in Southern Colorado, um where they offer, you know, ad sales for TV for the networks um as well as online sales as well. So advertising, sorry. So going a little bit on some of the platforms we we own, I'm not going to go too deep. I don't have enough time to cover each one of these, but through our Xfinity Services, we offer our internet packages as well, because I'm going to talk a little bit about that, about Pueblo being a gigabit community. Um, so I'll talk more about it, our internet services. Our X One Video Platform is more of a personalized um entertainment experience where you can have all the different apps all in one location. Uh, so we offer that as well as our home security, our our landline voice services, and our Xfinity Mobile services as well, all under the Xfinity um part of our business. And then again, going to our Comcast business, um, we did do a really great announcement here in March. I know a lot of people were there um at our Xfinity Store when we announced the seventy five million dollar expansion um to areas in Pueblo County that we don't serve, but then also being able to upgrade our business-grade services here in the city of Pueblo. Um, so you i- in the city, you'll be able to receive now um hu- up to a hundred gig symmetrical speeds if needed for, you know, large bandwidth users such as hospitals, things like that, data centers and so on. So we uh we 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 announced that as well this year. Um, and we offer services such as like, such as our data services, voice services, managed um services as well, all through our business service part of our business that we offer here in Pueblo. So our network. We're doing some really fast-moving upgrades with our network. Um, and our network uh that exists today, we're really going to be utilizing the networks that's already here with some enhancements. So last year, we announced um our nationwide rollout of what we call the Road to Ten G. So the Road to Ten G is basically the nation's largest uh multi-gig network deployment is what that is. So the goal is to reach more than fifty million homes by the end of twenty twenty five. And our network will reach all the neighborhoods we serve. So if we serve you on the north side, we serve you on the east side, you'll be able to receive uh similar services and speeds, uh the same services and speeds in each of those neighborhoods. So you know, wherever we can serve you, you'll be able to receive those services. Um, and then also it'll be on the existing connections that are in place today with some of the upgrades on our own. So you won't really, the customers won't really see those upgrades. The only thing that they may see is maybe a modem swap or something like that, but we're not putting in a brand-new network. Um, uh, we have a hundred and fifty thousand miles of fiber that that are there in place across the country. And we'll be utilizing that network to continue to upgrade our services and then deliver faster and faster speeds as we continue. So we also announced here in Colorado uh in twenty twenty-two, and we've been doing this, we're already doubling our download speeds to two gig um and then increasing our upload speeds by five to ten times faster upload speeds. And we'll continue to reinvest in our network and offer faster and faster speeds with better rely, with more reliability and and security as well. This here is a shows all the speed tiers that we offer here in Pueblo. Pueblo is a gigabit community today, the city of Pueblo. So as you can see, there are different speed tiers on this slide that, you know, if somebody needs a lot of bandwidth, they can, they can get gigabit extra if they want up to one point two gig. Or maybe they only have a few devices and they don't need that type of speed, they can get different speeds that are that are that are a little bit less and still be able to operate all their devices efficiently. And I do want to point out on this slide, um, there is Internet Essentials and Internet Essentials Plus that I'm going to talk to that is part of our low-income packages that we offer. Low-income households. So we invest in our network quite heavily, about twenty billion dollars we've invested in about a five years uh time. Um, here in Colorado, one point two billion dollars we invested in our network to help with these speeds, to help increase what we offer to our customers. We're staying well ahead of the demand. Um, we double our network capacity about every two and a half years to keep ahead of that demand. Internet traffic right now is asymmetrical, so a lot of download. Uh, also, there is upload, but not quite as much as download. So we'll continue to stay ahead of that demand and and offers services that we feel will accommodate all of our customers. Um, we added about fifty thousand miles of fiber as well throughout the areas that we've served. And we'll continue to uh to push our speeds over to more and more households. So going into our project, I'm sorry, Project Up and Digital Equity. So we're very proud to, you know, offer, we've just passed our one-year anniversary for Project Up. Project Up is a one-billion-dollar commitment over a ten-year uh uh time um that Comcast is helping advance digital uh equity. Um, so we're very passionate about this. We have a lot of partners as well in Pueblo that we've partnered with that you could see on the screen from El Centro to Boys and Girls Club, Southern Colorado Youth and Development um to help promote and help advance digital equity, I should say. Um, what we do know is about fifty percent of low-income families um lack access to technology uh required for online education, employment opportunities, things like that. And we also know by the year twenty thirty, the demand for workers with digital, basic digital skills will increase by sixty-nine percent. So we're trying to help make sure that everybody who who wants to be connected is connected. Um, this slide here will show a little bit of the ecosystem of our digital equity. It's not one of these components of Internet Essentials or Lift Zones or Affordable Connectivity that's going to do. It's all of them together. And I want to explain a little bit how each of these work. So Internet Essentials is Comcast program. We off, we um, we created this program in twenty eleven. We've already all, we've almost touched about six hundred thousand Coloradans with this program for low-cost internet um access. So it's, you could, there's two speed tiers, one for nine ninety-five and one for twenty-nine ninety-five. This includes equipment. This includes um, you know, if they want a self-install kit, free install. Uh, so this is the price and 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 again, no equipment fees or contracts associated to that. Um, and having good, having quality internet is only half the battle. You also need to have the equipment as well. So with this program, for those who are eligible to be part of this program, um, they can get a Brand New Dell laptop for a hundred and forty-nine ninety-nine and and it includes Microsoft Office as well. So if they're in this program, they can get the equipment to be able to operate the internet efficiently. And also, if they wanted a Chromebook, they could do that as well for one forty-nine ninety-nine as well. So it's a heavily subsidized uh uh program there from us. Um, does mention ACP as well, the Affordable Connectivity Program. Um, so it's a great federal program that we that we are helping promote. It is not exclusive to Comcast. It's for all providers to take part of. Basically, it's a thirty-dollar voucher that eligible households can put towards their internet bill or their Xfinity Mobile bill or mobile bill, I should say. Um, so it helps offset some of those costs. So like I said, if you had the nine ninety-five package, you could apply this uh voucher to that, and then you'd have twenty dollars extra. You could apply that to your 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 uh your mobile phone bill. Um, and then you can apply uh for this program for both ACP and Internet Essentials. If uh you go right to Xfinity dot com forward slash ACP, we do have a a store on North Elizabeth as well that you can go in, and we have associates there that can help walk people through. So with that, like I said, this is a slide that just shows, so I keep forgetting to hit that. Sorry about that. Um, both of the programs together and how they work. So um, the eligibility is listed here for those that that would be eligible. So you know, it's programs like, you know, the Federal Pale Grant, National School, uh Lunch Program, SNAP, Medicaid, any of those programs, those households would have, would be able to um qualify for these programs, and they could basically get their internet for free utilizing these programs. And then lastly, want to talk about outside the home. Um there it is, uh Lift Zones. So this is in partnership with what we did with Internet Essentials. This goes outside the home. Um, we do have these on the partners that I listed before with the Pueblo Boys and Girls Club, um El Centro, as well as Southern Colorado Youth Development. It's an area that people can go to, access the internet in a in a safe space. They can continue their education. They can apply for jobs. They could do whatever is important to them that they want to be connected to in these areas where they don't have to purchase anything and go into these and access the internet in a safe, warm space. So we're very excited about that. We have around a hundred here in Colorado, about twelve hundred and fifty overall throughout the nation. And like, and we have three here in Pueblo as as we sit today. So very proud of that program. And then we invest in the communities that we serve. So uh, this is last slide to 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 kind of finalize this presentation. Uh, forty-two point six million dollars in cash and in-kind contributions of just in Colorado over the last three years. Um, I did list Public Hispanic Education Foundation. Um, we partnered with them, very proud to partner with them, and they've been able to take advantage of some of this as well. Um, again, I already talked about the Internet Essentials, but I do want to talk a little bit about some of the the some, how Comcast tends to step up whenever there's a national emergency or anything like that, or natural disaster. So for example, what we did during COVID nineteen is we gave two months free of Internet Essentials so people could stay connected to the internet as well as opened up access to Wi-Fi hotspots throughout the community as well. And then I gave free educational resources for those that needed it, needed it to help with digital literacy education. And then again, um, just we launched twelve hundred and fifty Lift Zones to help, you know, people get access to the internet outside their home. So I know I kind of went fast, but I wanted to make sure I got it all in a, in the fifteen minutes that I had. So that's my presentation. Do any questions for me?
Well, great. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Amela. What uh questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Gary, for uh giving us that extensive uh um presentation. You know, um if there's any more capacity for a lift zone um in Pueblo uh to be had, I would like to encourage you, the Bessemer Wellness Center will open um on Abriendo and Northern. And that's an area that would uh probably benefit from um, it's, it's just a a resource center that will open up soon. Uh, but Jude Solano uh would be the person to talk to.
What is that opening?
I'm not sure exactly. Uh, it's under renovation now, but it'll be within I'm assuming the year, six months, something like that.
Great. Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to talk more about that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Flores?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Gary, for that uh update. Um, it's, um, I need to understand uh how all of these programs work uh with the cooperation of District Sixty and all of our students in the city.
Yeah.
Uh, as I understand, every, is that every child in District Sixty, I think, has a Chromebook now.
Mm-huh.
And uh, but if if you take that Chromebook home as an example and uh your parents don't have the resources or don't engage in these programs, uh, are they still able to to access the internet on their Chrome, or is the Chrome just strictly applications that deal with with uh subjects, I guess?
I don't know. I can't really speak to kind of what the district's policy is on what they can access. What I do know is that they are if they do want to connect to Internet Essentials, I think is what you're saying, if they have that at home, they can absolutely connect to Internet Essentials at home utilizing that device, if that's your question.
Yeah, and that's, that's uh, that's the main thing.
Yep. And if their parents wanted to get, you know, if they were part of these programs and they wanted to get an additional advice, it's not just for students. They can get it for themselves, too.
And then my la- my last question had to do with the enhancements that are uh that we've, you know, you've discussed with us before.
Uh-huh.
But your main office building now, I think it's on Ninth Street, isn't it?
Correct.
Tell me what you're doing there. That's really uh impactful now to the community. The community probably would be interested to know what you've done there to impact uh, you know, the uh the availability of uh internet and all of the other products that you have.
Absolutely. As we do our upgrades, when I was talking about some of the upgrades that we are doing, a lot of that, when I was saying the customer wouldn't see it, that's what we would see. That is where we're we're upgrading a lot of our devices and such in that facility itself. So that's where um we've expanded that, that you've seen the additional portion to the building that we've done. So that is part of the upgrade. So we've been investing into that location to continue to meet the needs of of all of the areas we serve.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Other questions? Mayor?
Gary, how many customers in Pueblo have um Internet Essentials or Internet Essentials Plus?
Oh.
You said six hundred thousand in Colorado.
Oh, sorry. Just for the people at home, how many customers in Pueblo or Pueblo County have Internet Essentials or Internet Essentials Plus? You indicated in your presentation that six hundred thousand customers in Colorado.
Yes.
Just wondering, how many of them are in Pueblo?
I don't have that number up the top of my head. I would have to get back to you on that, but I don't have that. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Gary, can you talk a little bit about how long Comcast will support the Lift Zones here in Pueblo?
Uh, that program, we have not seen any sort of sunset on that at this point. So we will continue and we're, you know, as we look at other locations as well. Um, we're happy that this has been a successful program. So we were always looking for, you know, additional opportunities and such. So yeah, I I don't see any end in the near future at this point.
Great. That's great to hear. Counselor Flores?
Yeah, I I just thought, uh, you you do provide phone service, too, don't you?
We do. Xfinity Mobile as well as landline services at home.
Great. So so you provide an actual, you you provide actual phones. Uh, so if you had a a community where you had uh a family that needed, you know, phone service, uh, it, do you kind of charge the same costs as any other, whether it's Verizon or Sprint or?
Uh, yeah, so our prices, so are you talking the cellular service or the cellular services are Xfinity Mobile? So we have very competitive pricing there. I don't really know what the, what our competition is charging. But our our pricing is very competitive, but that's where ACP does come in.
They could utilize the thirty dollars.
That for, yes.
For uh the payment of their their.
They sure can. Yep. Even if it was just Xfinity Mobile.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, seeing no other questions from Mr. Gary. Thank you so much for that presentation from Comcast. Um.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Moving right along then, our, on our agenda, um, is going to be a Carbon America update. I see Mr. Brown is on Zoom.
I am. Thank you. A quick question. Do I share my presentation from here?
Yes, Mr. Brand, you can.
Okay, great. Let me do that. We'll get this going.
There it is.
Does it show up?
Yes.
Great.
Yep, you're good.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm happy to be here and represent Project EOS, which is a collaboration among the Colorado School of Mines, Carbon America, and the Los Alamos Laboratory. We we are a project that will explore the potential to develop commercial carbon storage for Southern Colorado. Um, we are unified in our mission. Um, there's several components of the project. And Project EOS is a three-year feasibility study to see what the commercial, economic, social and technical viability of a carbon storage and store, a carbon capture and storage project is for the Pueblo community. Um, the School of Mines' Principal Investigator, Manika Prasad, will uh lead a team that will do the rock physics and geomechanics, the reservoir modeling of the underground geology. And very exciting to us, they've also brought in a uh social scientist, Jessica Smith, who's going to help do a study of the study. Um, Pueblo is among many communities around the country who are trying to make a lot of important energy decisions. And so we'll be also conducting a study of really engaging with the community. We want to reach um traditionally um underserved communities or underrepresented communities that don't always get a a voice in energy decisions, the community, and and help the the community not only assess this from a technical and economic standpoint, but what will the social impacts of the potential of a project like this be? Um, Carbon America, our Principal Investigator is Chris Cassell. He's a very uh experienced geologist from the oil and gas industry, and will be helping with the uh project management regulatory and environment permitting that we need to do and components of developing the potential commercialization uh, the commercialization plan for the project. And Los Alamos Lab, we're a a garden, that you know how esteemed they are. They will be helping us among other things, with the feasibility of the capture facilities at potential regional industrial facilities and also conducting a pipeline study to see uh what the potential routes may be, again, addressing environmental and social concerns. So what is the DOE Carbon Safe Initiative? Um, it's a very large, ambitious program, two point two-five billion in funding. And the goals of these projects is to find regional areas where carbon storage, and that is bearing, you know, CO2 underground can have a significant impact to improve local air quality uh while also helping a community reach regional decarbonization goals. Our project specifically was awarded thirty-two point six million dollars. It will conduct a three-year feasibility study where we will, again, start with the geology research. We will also look to see what it would take if the geology plays out, what would be the permitting process to permit a class-six injection well at the geology location. We will also, again, conduct a feasibility study on what facilities could potentially use carbon capture technology to be a participant. And then how would we route that carbon capture out of the community to the uh carbon storage site deep underground? This is a feasibility study that if all of the pieces do come together, what we would be able to hand the community would be a shovel-ready project that it could consider as a potential option as you guys decide your energy future. You know, what our goal with this project is just to aid you in that process and give you a very informed, data-driven um feasibility study to see if carbon capture might be a potential solution for your decarbonization goals. There are a lot of different parts. Um, this is a very high-level timeline. It it does lack um exact timing intentionally, um just because some of the pieces will be triggered based on um DOE timing with um their funding mechanisms. Um, but essentially, from day one, we want this to be a community-centric project where we can engage with the community and take in all voices as we move through the process. Um, again, we start with the geology, because without the the geology site being proved up scientifically, you know, the rest of the project doesn't go anywhere. So we will be starting first with uh the site location. I'll get into that. Once we have a site that we feel has all of the right scientific characteristics, we will work through the permitting process and applications um to have those application processes um uh, you know, ready to go in case this project does want to consider going through the construction phase, and then we'll do the feasibility studies. All of that work will go into a community benefit plan um that will take into account environmental considerations. Uh, the DOE's Justice Forty considerations and other environmental um justice. And uh, you know, how can this be an economic development engine uh for the community? So where are we right now? Um, we're we're actually on the far right of this slide. We're in the geologic storage. Um, you know, these are the three main components, but as I mentioned, our next step will be doing three-D seismic data um and geol- and uh other um data collection, which will help us determine where we might want to do a test well for our project. Um, if the geology plays out well and we we feel promise, promising results there, that'll Um, if the geology plays out well and we we feel promise promising results there, that allows us to then um to engage further with local emission sources, which we've had some preliminary conversations. We're hopeful that we can do some pilots in the area to test out new capture technology. And we also, in a separate award funding, we're given money to uh do a feasibility of direct air capture, which is a different technology. It's it's where you just you take existing CO2 right out of the atmosphere. Um, which is different than direct source capture where you attach technology right to the facility. Again, then if that proves out, that's when we will have better line of sight of where potential pipelines would go. Um, right now, our first target zone to do uh geologic testing is in the Chico Basin Ranch area. So it's about thirty five miles northeast of Pablo. Um, our next stage in mid-October, we we do have the permitting uh to start our seismic data collection. And that data collection will help us determine a good location for a stratigraphic uh testing well. Um, we picked this location, one, because of the geology, but secondly, um, it's on state lands, which recently came out with a carbon management policy. They have seen this as an opportunity, as a new revenue source uh for state lands, which primarily supports uh public schools. To date, uh, the Pablo County area has benefited uh to the tune of sixty one, sixty one million dollars through state land money. Um, carbon storage has the potential to be a new revenue source. Um, and it's it's subsurface, which which is nice about this is that it doesn't affect any surface uses of the of the land. So, you know, our projects, we'll go into it, but if our projects were to go to to a final commercial stage and be in operation, a single injection well for for CO2 storage is a very small facility. It takes less than one acre of surface ground. It's about eight feet tall. So when you consider the other renewable projects in the area such as solar and wind, it has a much less footprint on the surface impact. It's all subsurface, which we see as to be a valuable uh potential for your community. So what we'll be doing, just to get, I'm not a technical expert, but basically the nickname for these trucks is called thumper trucks. And quite simply, they go out and they and they do uh small bumps to the ground that create vibrations. Other instruments collect that, those vibrations to give us a digital three D uh somewhat fingerprint or kind of a sonogram of what's happening other ground. We've done um we're going to be in about a twenty five mile square mile area in the state lands. We did an environmental assessment. It's primarily on in El Paso County where our work will be performed. Um, there's no environmental sensitivities in the area we'll be working. Um, like I mentioned, I hear some, just some of what the uh instruments look like. They're very small. They have very little uh impact and they're just temporary sensors that pick up on these uh um vibrations that we put to the earth. But here's just one example of the kind of data that we collect. Well, you we use these three D imageries and the geologists study these very closely. They're looking for the the right characteristics for a storage facility, a reservoir. Um, which, again, we're looking for stable geology with no fault lines. We're looking for deep sandstone or limestone formations that have um great capacity to to accept the CO2 injection. And then we're looking for cap rock layers above that that are adequate enough to trap the CO2 permanently underground. To get to that level of detail is why we have to do what's called a geologic sampling well. We do use an oil and gas drill rig that's installed for about forty five days. And what essentially we're doing is we're going to be creating a very large metal straw deep into the ground. The metal straw that we create, um, it's protected with um steel and cement casing. And it allows us to lower very sophisticated geology instruments down into the hole so we can do more detailed analysis. Um, we'll be taking fluid samples, core samples, um, wireline, log data, like I explained, of putting this instrumentation underground so we can get very detailed. Um, you know, with inches or a foot, well, we get very detailed information about what the geology looks like. That helps us um again, confirm the location has all the proper characteristics for CO2 injection. If that proves out for the first location, then we would start the process of a class six uh ejection well application with the EPA. It's a very stringent application process. It's typically fifteen hundred pages and can take uh up to eighteen months to complete. That is my presentation. I I will open it to questions now.
Well, great. Thank you, Mr. Brand, for that presentation. Questions from council? Mr. Brown, does this, um, do we need to pass, I guess maybe this is, this is not a question for you, but rather um, maybe Ms. Lano or Mayor or Mr. Hippolyte. Um, do we need to pass an ordinance for them to do this work or is that? Is there anything that we need to do about that?
Yeah, there there's no local um ordinance necessary for this. This has been permitted by the uh the new, the newly named Oil and Gas Commission, which is now called the Energy and Carbon Management Commission. So the seismic work is permitted through that agency. And we have an exploration lease with State Land Board uh to conduct this work. We did provide a thirty day notice to El Paso County.
Hmm.
Um, as the project proceeds, and if it goes the way we envision, and we can prove out um that the geology is satisfactory to to, you know, host uh CO2 injection, then we would want to engage with you um about the local process and ordinances that would be required to capture that carbon at the emission facilities and transport it out of your community. And that's when we would have local engagement with you on the permitting process.
And when would that, when would that be, Mr. Brown?
Well, our project is just a feasibility study. We're just, the three years that we're doing our feasibility is just to present, get all the data, and that is including technical, financial, uh, social, and present that. Um, it's, and then at the end of that three years, there will be a commercialization plan that the community will get to decide. If it's something that sounds that the community wants, then three, about three years from now, there would be a a roadmap for the construction process. So we're several years out from having to think about um, you know, the actual construction of a pipeline through the community, but we certainly would want to engage during the feasibility study to make sure we could take all considerations um of the community. You know, we want to hear from everyone in terms of um what is best, you know. Our our pre-feasibility that we've already done, just to kind of do a tabletop exercise, we have looked for avenues that could um you know, capitalize on existing right of ways like transmission line corridors that already have disturbance and would have minimal impact to communities. But again, all of that is depend dependent upon which emitters participate. And um, all of that is still just very early-stage discussion.
Great. And would you mind uh stopping to share your screen, Mr. Brown?
Sure.
So it sounds like we we won't hear an update or revisit until twenty twenty six. I know that Counselor Flores has a question.
Uh, yes, at the point that you identify the perfect storage location, um, explain to me uh how this carbon is going to be captured, I guess. And uh you know, you spent most of your presentation based on identifying the the correct storage or the the elaborate uh study that you will be doing to find the uh the appropriate storage underground. Like, I'm I I'm trying to picture how that carbon gets into this storage area and what methods you'll be using. And, you know, I, that's the part of the picture that I can't, I can't imagine in my head. Could you help us with that?
Yeah. Um, I don't know. If you could um unmute one of my partners, Manika from School of Mines, she might want to answer that uh in a better fashion than I.
I think I can, I can do that myself. This is Manika Prasad from Colorado School of Mines.
Oh, there she is.
Um, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Wonderful. Okay. So there are many different ways to capture. Uh, this can be done at site. Let's say you have a plant that emits carbon dioxide. Um, but what is done normally is you put one of several processes in place. Uh, some of them are uh work as a filter, for example. So you have a membrane that selectively captures certain types of gases, lets others through. In this case, this would be a carbon dioxide capture. There are others that use uh um um materials that bind carbon dioxide to the surface and then release them when when needed. So so those uh types of methodologies or uh Carbon America has their method where they freeze carbon dioxide more or less and create, capture carbon dioxide in that way. So there are, there are many different ways to capture carbon dioxide. Once you have that captured, it needs to be transported to the location. So the location, for example, in in what uh um my colleague John, John Brown was showing us. So that is done uh uh by trucking, which is not very good, or by pipelines. And so you transport the captured carbon dioxide at various locations accumulated at the site. And then it is injected into the formation. Um, Mr. Brown, you had a slide that you just showed. If you can put that up of the geologic section. So ultimately, what happens is uh if you go to slide twenty five, please. The um, the the work that we will do will reveal structure like this. This is a schematic structure. So the capture is happening at the factory that you see on the surface. In this case, the uh transport of the captured carbon dioxide is very little. It is going only a slight distance. In this case, uh, it could be a kilometer, two or five kilometers um over to the west side, and there is an injection well that is depicted. Um, that was the construction of the well that uh Mr. Brown was showing you. And so we put the carbon dioxide in that well. That well is drilled to the formation of choice. And that can be anywhere from five thousand to ten thousand feet deep. And that is what the studies now will reveal. How deep is the formation? How good is it? And does it have enough storage capacity? Once we have drilled uh that well and injected the carbon dioxide, um, the geologic process is such that uh the uh gas stays in that formation because of the layers of uh uh um seal rocks, rocks that do not allow anything to penetrate and uh escape. So pretty much if you think of an aquifer, there is groundwater in the aquifer. It does not escape unless we drill a well and you have an arthesian uh uh rise of water where, or you can pump it out. And uh if you don't have the well, the water is in place. In this case, we're doing the reverse process. We're drilling a well, putting the carbon dioxide in place and then cementing everything and saying, and uh um and letting the seal formation do its job. So that's in a nutshell, the the process that we uh uh we expect. And so the the slide that was just there shows you the different processes that we expect will happen. The, one of the things that is um um also uh expected is that there is reaction taking place between the carbon dioxide, uh, the brine that is there, that's salty water, saline water, uh, and the formation so that the carbon dioxide is fixed in place. Now, that can happen. It need not happen. So part of our work will be, A, to look at how much capacity there is. What is the thickness? What is the storage amount? Uh, B, what does the seal look like? Is it good? Is it a good seal? If it is not a good seal, we have to walk away because it's not going to uh um seal the carbon dioxide in place. And the third one is, do we expect any reactions to take place? So those are sort of the processes we we anticipate. I hope that that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you very much. That helps me a lot. I appreciate it.
Well, great. Thank you for that answer. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Brown or Carbon America? So it sounds like we will hear from you and your team um around twenty twenty six. And until then, best of luck.
Oh, thank you. No, you'll, we'll certainly be in touch along the whole project path, but uh but thank you.
Great. Well, last on our agenda, um, we're going to talk about about possible deterrence for speeding. So can I please have Chief Knoller and Mr. Hayes to the podium? All right, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, uh, uh, Work Session Chair, um, Members of Council, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm here to discuss kind of what we've been doing uh for speed enforcement and some things that we try to do and are continuing to try to do to address the issue of of traffic violations in general and speeding in particular. Over the last three years, uh, these are the, this is the data points for speeding tickets alone that have been written. Um, twenty twenty one, we wrote over two thousand uh twenty one speeding tickets. Um, last year, we wrote two thousand four hundred and thirty uh speeding citations. So far this year, we've written over one thousand uh thirty six uh speeding citations. What we do right now currently and what we're uh able to do is with our eight traffic officers, that includes the sergeant, we do patrols in areas where we have high incidences of accidents uh during the school year, particularly at the beginning of each school session, whether that's the middle semester or the beginning of the school year. We do increased enforcement around the different schools. Uh, we have a traffic trailer that we put out in areas that that puts, uh, you know, it's got the sign, tells people how fast they're going uh in areas where we get high incidences of complaints. That trailer has the ability to capture data related to what the speeds are actually in those neighborhoods while that trailer is deployed. So based on that output, um, our officers will go there and do extra patrols in that area. As you guys know, because you approve the grants, um, we do get a speed enforcement grant uh every year since I was the traffic sergeant in two thousand twelve. Um, that allows us to use officers on overtime to address speeding. And we do that throughout the year. Uh, during certain events, we we up the number of slots. But there are uh, it's, it's a, it's a fairly popular uh overtime because it, you know, this, this catching speeders is not the same as doing a big, long burglary report or something like that. So we do get quite a bit of participation in in those activities. Um, we are looking into the information that Counselor Winter uh supplied regarding uh uh photo enforcement, but we have not moved forward in that direction at this point. Uh, that's, that's really what I have to present tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions uh after, either before or after Andrew makes his presentation.
So I don't have a presentation per se, but I just wanted to give kind of an overview on the, some of the, I guess, uh, the process, I guess, when we do get speeding complaints or concerns from citizens. Uh, we investigate several of those usually a week. Uh, and all of them are looked at from some measure, if there's some kind of traffic engineering um, application that can be made to help reduce uh the impact of speeding or to reduce speeding in general. Um, the, not all of the complaints come in, have a fix that is valid. Many people, of course, we all have driver's licenses, so we all got a good idea of how to fix the traffic problems. Um, the, the issue, I guess, is that not all of the suggestions, I guess, are valid. Um, and so sometimes the suggestions come in and they don't work with the traffic configuration or the roadway configuration in that area or um, you you know, there, there's requests for speed bumps to be installed in on a collector's street. Uh, those are things that just are incompatible fixes. Um, and and while challenging, we Um, and and while challenging, we do have houses that are on uh collector's streets, for instance. And so it's it's tough because those are generally higher speed roadways, uh higher traffic volume roadways. And so it it exacerbates the problem and and uh those citizens are more sensitive and rightly so to uh speeding incidents that occur in their areas. Um, a few things that we are doing, um, as we get those complaints in, like I say, we investigate those, we work with those citizens and uh community groups to address some of the concerns that come up. We are um a very specific example of one um fix that we're working on is on St. Clair right now. So just about a month ago, we painted some uh additional striping on St. Clair between Pueblo Boulevard and Amherst or so. Uh, it's a stretch through a neighborhood where they got a, it's right on the south side of Elmwood Golf Course. Uh, a lot of the citizens that live there on St. Clair were complaining about speeders on on their street. Um, and one of the psychological things uh that we as drivers feel when we drive is if there's a big, wide open stretch of asphalt, it feels like you can move pretty quickly, especially when there's not a lot of other cars on the road. Sometimes a little bit of striping, believe it or not, has a has an effect on that. So we're trying as an experiment because this is a stretch that's gonna get repaved soon. Uh, we're trying uh a a uh that on that stretch to we've narrowed the or narrowed the traffic lanes and designated a shared bike and parking lane on the side. And so you actually have some paint boundaries, but there's a boundary there nonetheless for those drivers to stay within it. So psychologically makes drivers who might be going a little bit fast uh slow down just a little bit because they feel like they're a little bit more constrained. It does nothing for somebody who's racing. I I there's not much uh from an engineering perspective that we can do with paint and stri- signs even um signals. If if you're not listening to speed on the signs, there's a lot of things you're not listening to. So those kinds of behaviors are are kind of above and beyond what we're talking about here. But for general uh speed related, um I guess fixes, this is one that we're trying out here. We've seen success in other other locations where this has been applied. We're trying it here. We've taken before uh implementation traffic volume and speed measurements. And so we're gonna compare that data with the post-implementation measures uh here in the next month or so. So we'll we'll get an idea of if this is gonna work or not. And that when we repave this section, we'll also decide whether this is gonna be an effective fix at this location or not and and either replace it or not. Um, another um I guess, opportunity that we've got coming up here, we're working, we've received a Safe Streets for All grant, uh, which is ultimately gonna result in a uh comprehensive safety plan that involves not only vehicular or transportation projects and uh infrastructure projects that might be named as um are identified to come out of that. Uh, it will also, I guess, give an opportunity for us to provide some safety analysis at some dangerous intersections where speeding may be a factor. Uh, so we've got uh about, we have a, we track our worst intersections every year. And so across those intersections, we've identified several that are repeat. And they show up every year as as high, high numbers of accidents, high numbers of incidents. Uh, and so those are gonna be studied and looked at as part of our Safe Streets for All grant. And then that data will be used in identifying specific projects that might be effective at reducing accidents and if there's speeding incidents at those intersections, uh reducing that as well. So there's different opportunities here coming up and coming down the pike that we can use to try to help address this concern. Council is also aware that we're in the process of installing uh roundabouts at several different locations around the city. Uh, two projects probably will kick off here in the next few months, one at Eagle Ridge and Dillon. Uh, that is an H-SIP project, Highway Safety Improvement Program project funded by CDOT. Uh, this is gonna be a little bit different kind of uh feel, obviously, up there by Sam's Club, uh Texas Roadhouse there at that intersection. It's a three-way intersection right now. It's a four-way, uh, but uh traffic generally comes only from the three sides. Uh, but the roundabout will will certainly make that intersection a little bit safer, give people a better way to turn um and and hopefully help reduce number of accidents at that location. There's another one at Berkeley and Mesa that has also been recently completed on the design that is going to not only are we doing the roundabout, we're also making some utility improvements in that area. So at the time, we're making these improvements. It was uh an easy uh add to the project for that. A couple more coming down the road also that were funded by CDOT in future years, but Thirteenth and Grand, Lake and Orman. Um, there's there's several. So uh over the next few years, you'll see Jackson and Adams. Uh, so you'll see several of these coming in in different neighborhood areas where incidentally, also speeding incidents have been known to occur. So uh we're hopeful that some of those um, what I'll call traffic calming measures and also traffic efficiency improvements will be installed next few years and we'll see some improvements here is our hope. So with that, we'll take any questions you've got.
Great. Thanks for that update about possible deterrence for speeding. Any questions for staff? Council Martinez, Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for putting that info together. Um, I'm kind of curious on the um process that folks would go to through either PD or through Public Works on um, let's just say Public Works, for example, um, I have a speeding um folks that uh concerned about speeding on Jefferson and Evans, let's say. What would be the process there that Public Works takes um to determine whether um, a sign or painting or rumble strips, things like that are actually applicable?
Sure. So again, any given scenario, we'll go out and we'll look at the roadway classifications to kind of determine what kind of traffic volumes are out there uh and what kinds of measures or or mitigations need to be in place for that size or style of road. Uh, every every intersection is also different, right? So we've got in the city, that's not one of them, I don't believe. You said Evans and Jefferson, yes. So there there are some intersections we've got that are also a little bit crazy, have five legs in them. And so those kinds of intersections we need to look at and and engineer just a little bit more carefully. Uh, but to traditional four-way stops that most drivers are used to are are generally looked at from uh the the perspective of having a minor or a major uh roadway that go through and determining whether four-way stops, two-way stops, stops, lights, signals uh or other measures might be needed in order to help control traffic through there. Uh, there are also, like you say, other measures that can be done if if rumble strips generally aren't installed in neighborhoods, just people that live there generally don't want that. Um, sometimes folks will ask for speed bumps on their streets and there may be occasions where it's appropriate. There are some in on Goodnight, for instance, running through City Park. Um, there 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 are places where where speed bumps might be an appropriate solution. But they certainly don't fit everywhere. And so we try to identify the right solution for the right intersection.
Um, how would folks get in touch with Public Works to um maybe uh put in a formal complaint or inquiry?
So multiple ways to get a hold of us. We're here Monday through Friday, eight to five. You can always come see us in person uh at our office over on D Street, right next to the police department. Uh, you can also connect with us online through the place portal. Uh, there's a way for citizens to uh submit concerns, complaints, questions, uh occasionally kudos come in. Uh, so we we uh we take them all the time and certainly by email as well. Pubworks@pueblo.us is our email address. And always by phone at seven one nine five five three two two nine five.
Great, thanks. And Chief, if uh folks have um issues in their neighborhood or around a school zone that they want uh speeding uh speed limits to be enforced, how would they get in touch with uh the police department?
Absolutely. Uh, uh, you can call our traffic unit. Unfortunately, I did not bring that number with me, but our our traffic unit would be the their first point of contact. There is a form online that you can fill out for complaint complaint form. It's generally set up to use if you're complaining about an officer, but you could certainly type a complaint in there. We review all of those and we could route it to uh the traffic unit. That'd be another way online to do it. Uh, like Andrew said, we're open. Uh, our lobby is open uh five days a week, Monday through Friday, between eight and five. Um, and you can always talk to an officer if you see him out on the street and let them know.
Um, and just lastly, what's the process to determine to uh whether folks should go out there or not? Um, not should go out there or not, um, whether um a speed trap is enforced. Um, I know it's about availability of the overtime and and officers, things like that. Um, but just can you explain a little bit of the process to us?
One of the things we'll do uh is set out that traffic trailer, which will give us data on the actual speeds. Because what we found, um, historically, people think cars are actually going faster than they truly are. So it's good to go out there and get some actual data where we can go. It also puts people on notice in that area that that law enforcement is looking at uh enforcement efforts out there. And then we would deploy those those officers um in a one, two, three, eight, eight car unit uh depending on where and availability of of where we can set up and 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 all that kind of stuff to catch the people that are speeding. Um, you know, what I think I like to I like to point out is that from from our standpoint is the police department. Um, traffic enforcement is not meant to be a job, a revenue generator. It is meant to change behavior and and get people to obey the law rather than generate revenue for the city. So um putting the trailer out before we go out there in those cases where we can, I mean, clearly, we don't wanna set up the trailer on the interstate. But you know, in the residential areas on certain streets where it's safe to do so, it makes some sense to gather data and put people on notice before we go out there and and write citations.
Yeah, and that could also deter folks, um, just that machine out there being being out there. Thank you both.
Counselor Maestri?
So why hasn't photo enforcement been looked into? I mean, it is self-sustaining, isn't it? And other cities are using it. Um.
Other cities are, we are looking at it. I I just mentioned earlier that um we are looking into the feasibility of it um after Ms. uh Winner brought it up. Um, it's it's a matter of there there's some things with it that make it difficult uh or difficult-ish. Um, and and those are the areas where you can use it are residential areas. They're not any uh of the areas where we really see the most accidents um happening. Um, we couldn't deploy those on Northern, we couldn't deploy them on Elizabeth, uh, we couldn't deploy them on the interstate. And these Pueblo Boulevard, Lake Avenue, and these are the areas where we we tend to see the largest uh number of of accidents. Um, the other issue with them is that you have to post a notice two hundred yards prior to the van saying that there's photo enforcement, which again, may get people to slow down while those signs are up. But I think it reduces the effectiveness of it, whereas with officers, we don't have to do that. We can post officers and they can, they can issue citations. That being said, we are looking into it. Um, it would require us to hire people to operate those systems. Um, they have to be actually uh manned, if you will. Um, there has to be a person there when the when the device is operating. Um, so we would, it would require us to hire personnel to do that.
So it's not a contracted service where they
The equip, from my understanding, and we're in the early stages of researching it, so I may not be uh speaking entirely uh uh from a a position of full knowledge. From my understanding, the personnel would be the responsibility of the city. The equipment is what you contract for, the van and the uh photo radar equipment. But that may depend from one vendor to the next. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to see that because um from when um Counselor Winner gave her presentation, it sounded like um the citations, the uh coverage that, I mean, the citations that were issued covered all of those expenses. And so it's all, if it's self-sustaining.
That could be, but that's not my understanding uh right now. But we are looking into it and uh you know, as we as we get that information, we'll, I'll have a little bit more uh ability to speak on that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Winner?
Sure. Uh, and again, I know this is preliminary for you, but um I was told by the um gentleman that is in charge of it in Denver um stated that state law says it has to be manned. If you're looking for um anything ten miles over the speed limit, you can definitely go under the speed limit, but uh over, under that ten miles over. But if it's, if you wanna say, if you want tickets issued five miles over in a school in school zone, then it has to be manned. But you do need one employee that sits there and looks at the film and says, yes, hits a button and says, yes, that's speeding. Yes, that's speeding.
Okay.
Um, and then also, uh, I mean, we had twelve officers leave right after they got their twelve, ten thousand dollar bonus. So I mean, are you, doesn't that make you even shorter on staff?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think we really need to look at um more and more technology, especially with the the low number of of people that we have that can actually work.
I agree.
Um, as I've said over and over, all the baby boom boomers have retired and we're not gonna see that kind of workforce until twenty forty. So we need every kind of technology we we can use.
I I agree.
Uh, now I did talk to a a woman at Vera Mobility and she said she was working with your sergeant. And she said she was gonna have cost to you by Thursday. Did you?
I have not seen those. If if uh Officer or Sergeant Sensorbox received that data, he has Fridays off. He works Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, he may not have gotten that number, those numbers to me if he's received them, so I I don't have that information.
Okay.
I believe that's who we contract with for the red light cameras.
Okay. Um, I know how you feel about it personally, but to move forward, can council push that forward or?
Ma'am, but we're looking into it. Um, and and you know, that's my department. I take the responsibility. I don't have to like everything I do. I just have to do it. Um, so we will look forward, move forward and see how that goes and I'll report to the mayor. And uh, um, if that's the the way he wants to go, then then we'll we'll move forward.
Sure, sure. So I know that Denver said they were at fifty five hundred dollars per unit. Um, and of course, the more units you have, the less expensive it is. So say if we have one unit, I mean, that's certainly worth an experiment.
Sure.
Um, and they said it does change behavior. I mean, certainly, if you get a forty dollar ticket driving home in a residential area, that's gonna change your behavior.
Sure.
And most of these people, they were first-time offenders on speeding. And it doesn't take, it it doesn't involve any points on your license at all, but it's correcting behavior.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, we are looking into it and uh I'll make a report to the mayor once we have some data. Um, pricing, all that kind of stuff, what what it takes to uh appropriately prosecute that kind of a charge, because at some point, there's somebody's gonna fight it. So we have to know the procedures that we have to have in order to go to municipal court and 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 present it to the to the municipal court judge. But uh we are looking into it and I will, uh, now that I know that you were told they would have those numbers by Thursday, when I go back tomorrow, I will see if he's got those numbers.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Forrest?
Uh, this isn't about speeding, but it's about the camera intersections that we have. Who makes the determination um when the photo is taken uh as to whether or not somebody has run a red light? Uh, I think there's a, and I I thought it was a municipal judge that did that, but I'm not sure. Uh, because um there's a judgment there as to whether or not they ran the red light or whether it was the amber light and all of that.
Correct. We have, we have an officer inside the traffic unit that is, or it's multiple officers, because if one's off, somebody else can do it. But a police officer actually reviews each one of those and determines whether or not the person was stopped just past the stop bar. For example, that's one thing that might trigger a camera, uh whether or not the light was amber, um, as you say, um, in in all these different factors. And then the officer will, uh, it's on a computer program, a computer system. And the officer will determine whether or not it meets the requirements for the citation. And if it does, they process it as a citation and the company mails them a a uh uh citation. They do have the right to uh uh go to court over the citation. Um, and in that case, the officer then would pres- would go to court and and present what they what they have. There is a short, if I, if it's been a long time since I've reviewed them. I used to do them when I was the traffic sergeant back in uh two thousand twelve. But uh, I think there's a short video that you get to see as well as the picture, um, a very short video of of what happened. But I again, I, it's been a minute, so I may be miss, I may be miss speaking. It's been twelve years.
Is there, uh, you know, one of the things I'm I'm always amazed at how many times I see people texting while they're driving. And it's not, I mean, it's it's pretty routine. I mean, I do, I'm at a stoplight and I can see that the the person next to me is texting. If somebody is texting in that intersection and and uh you know, uh, and they run the light, I mean, can they be given a citation for texting while they're driving?
They can be. I mean, sometimes those images would be good enough to tell that. Um, and certainly that could be the case, except I think if memory serves, if we're issuing that citation, we cannot issue a subsequent citation because the officer didn't conduct the stop. So I I am not sure. I don't think we can issue anything other than the red light uh violation because an officer would have to personally or um, you know, if there was an accident involved, we'd have to have other evidence that would lead us to believe that they were texting. I don't think we could issue a red light violation with the camera and then add additional charges to that citation.
Uh, my last comment had to do with uh uh, one, one of the uh, one of the things that may work with people is uh, it was interesting because it was, it happened in Brooklyn, New York, of all places. And they're using, uh, they're they're saying that the only way that you control speeding is by scaring people. And the way that Brooklyn did it is by using uh billboards actually showing people uh that were hit by um, you know, by a speeder, either a crash into a car or hitting actually a pedestrian. And uh they they were seeing thirty-five deaths along this one. As busy as New York is, you can imagine that that's a lot. It sounds like a lot, but maybe it isn't. Uh, but it, it worked uh, by these, the, the, actually scaring people that their speeding is going to cause these, this kind of calamity and they utilize that and uh, at some point, maybe we try that, especially in the areas that we all know that uh, uh, that, that we have speeding going on all the time.
Okay.
Just a suggestion. Thank you.
You, you had mentioned the uh, red light cameras and just one of the primary purposes of those being installed is really to mitigate uh, T-bone or or uh, uh, crossways collisions where somebody's run the red light. There may be ancillary benefits associated with, with reducing speeding to some extent, but in some ways it also creates issues. People see those, know those, know where those cameras are and they'll screech to a halt and cars behind. So you so, uh, will sometimes have an accident, right? So they uh, you might see increases in the number of rear end collisions at an intersection when they're installed. But uh, the main point there is to definitely ensure that we're mitigating the most dangerous type of collision, which is those uh, T-bones. Um, so those are, those are installed in a couple of places around the city.
Did you have anything?
I, I do, I would like to, it's, it's a little bit off topic, if that's okay. I wanted to kind of update council on some things that, that we've been doing as an organization that kind of it's not necessarily speeding, but it's the efforts that the cops, you mentioned how, how we lost twelve officers in the last couple of months. So far this year, and this is as of uh, September twenty-first, our officers have decreased part one crime thirteen point two percent over last year's numbers. We've seen double-digit decreases in arson, burglary, um, robbery, sexual assault and theft. Um, we've also uh, had an fairly dramatic impact in our aggravated assault rate this year. While it still is up over two percent over twenty twenty-two's numbers. Earlier in the year, we were up almost forty percent over, over twenty twenty-two numbers. Um, we've done a lot of different things as an organization to try to address that. Um, we have uh, diverted a lot of different calls from uh, patrol to other areas of the department in order for them to be more proactive and out on the street more to to try to address the violent crime that's happening. Um, so far this year, we've diverted sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine calls for service from patrol. Our CSOs, the community service officers, which in the beginning of the year, you guys approved two more uh, to a total of six. Those, we have three CSOs in training right now that should be out, I think at the end of the month or the first week of October. So far, our CSOs this year have handled almost thirty-five hundred calls. Um, our dice unit has handled twenty-seven hundred calls. Our traffic unit has handled thirty-seven hundred calls. Obviously, most of those would be traffic accidents, traffic collisions. Our records clerks are, have handled almost three thousand calls this year. Um, so far, our SROs have handled almost twenty-four hundred calls for service in the schools. Um, and our other investigative units combined have handled almost uh, eleven hundred calls for service. Um, you know, that doesn't sound like a lot when you think about a hundred and forty thousand calls for service last year. But it is about a uh, I think I did the numbers for an article I wrote in our uh, PD Insider. It's about a thirty-eight percent increase in diverted calls over last year um, of what we were doing. And I think this, I think CompStat, I think the use of technology and other things that we're doing and implementing in our organization has helped our officers have a, what I believe is a fairly dramatic impact in part one crime here in Pueblo so far this year. Now, the year is not over. It's only uh, September. But uh, for the first three quarters of the year, our officers have done an outstanding job under some very challenging conditions to bring safety uh, to our community. Uh, I wish it could be more. Um, I know my officers do as well. And I know that there's some areas where we still have some issues with crime. Obviously homicide is one of those areas. Um, one thing I would like to point out, because my first thought was, is this happening because fewer people are calling the police department? So I pulled the numbers at the end of, as of September seventeenth. Um, our department has received a hundred and six thousand and forty calls for service. Last year, for the same time period, we received a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five calls for service. It's not a significant uh, statistical difference between those two years. So I would have to say the work my cops are doing to drive down crime is not related to our citizens not calling us. In fact, we received more calls for service this year than we have last year. Um, I think it's a direct impact on the data-driven approach that we are using now to address crime through CompStat. I think it's uh, exact, or absolutely uh, related to the drive and the work ethic of the officers who have remained behind to help us. And I think it shows uh, what can be done and and how things maybe can change for the better as we start to increase our, our capacity within the organization. Utilizing uh, technology, um, as you pointed out, Ms. Winter, in, in a variety of different ways to include photo, photo radar. Um, so I am, I, I just thought I, I wanted to share that with you because I'm really proud of the men and women of the Pueblo Police Department and the work that they've done. And I think they don't get enough credit sometimes for the changes that they've made in our city. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, uh, Data Chief. Um, I'm curious if you can talk a little bit about who's paying for the roundabouts that you mentioned, Mr. Hayes?
Sure. So the bulk of the roundabouts, all except for the Berkeley Mesa one have been uh, uh, awarded as grants. So they are H SIP, again, highway safety improvement program grants. I believe they're federal source funds that get passed through C dot to municipalities. So we compete for those based on uh, need, based on number of accidents, based on severity of accidents. Uh, so each year we've applied for at least one and this past year we applied for four and I think we were awarded three or three and two, maybe. Um, so we've been pretty successful in bringing in funds for those projects there. But they compete region-wide for those projects or for funds based on, again, uh, accident criteria, uh, primarily. Um, there's a small local match with those H SIP and I can't remember if it's ten percent or twenty percent, but it's relatively a small amount uh, that we contribute into those projects. So the re, that really is the state uh, or federal government paying for those projects mostly. Uh, and this is above and beyond all of the other road repairs and road upgrades that we get. So these are, these are kind of uh, icing on the cake, so to speak. And certainly they're, because they're driven by safety data, um, they should be projects that ultimately result in safer roads for us. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, no, it, it definitely does. And um, Councilor Flores actually brought up Brooklyn. I was actually in Brooklyn last month and I noticed that um, one of their kind of speed prevention efforts is instead of doing a um, like a speed bump throughout the whole, you know, from sidewalk to sidewalk, they do quarter.
Right.
Bumps. Have we looked at that at all?
So in terms of, if I'm understand the right thing here, if we're talking about partial lane, the, the lane is partially blocked with some and there's spaces still for tires to go through?
Yeah, basically. Yeah. So like the um, it's kind of like, I don't know, court, quarter size. So only one tire is ever raised at a time instead of both.
I've seen that in a few places, but I've also seen, uh, I guess where you've got a very narrow strip where tires still go through. Um, you, you have to make them pretty wide to be able to accommodate different widths of vehicles, right? But uh, you might have a bump. But people have to slow down to aim their tires to get through the, the uh, the openings without having to hit a speed bump. So there's a number of solutions out there. Again, some permanent, some temporary, um, different, different types of things, but I have seen one similar to, I think, what you're talking about.
Yeah. Well, I would be curious to know if it, if there is a return on investment for that one. Cause you know, you can't necessarily skip the whole thing, because of, you know, you have to stay in the boundaries of the lane. But you still have to slow down enough such that, you know, two of the tires on one side still have to hit the bump.
Okay.
So I'd be curious on any data that you have on that.
Sure. When, one of the concerns we have obviously with speed bumps in general is uh, an increase in the number of claims we're also filing or that are filed also. So we, we, we investigate those claims when they come in and those are processed through our, through our insurer. Um, so i- if we are um, putting, putting things out that that could cause additional damage to vehicles, there's the potential for issues there, but uh, it's just one of the, one of the mitigations we look at.
And I know that a lot of the complaints, at least I get, is um, are people who live on streets that are in the C dot right of way, whether that is Lincoln, um, you know, like kind of the fourth street corridor. Are there any things that we can do to mitigate speed along that, given that it's state property or how, how can we change behaviors in that area?
Sure.
Through built environment?
So it, it, it's a little challenging because it is not under cities' direct control. Um, you know, there are still enforcement um, items that we can take care of there, but there are um, is the, it is the state's right of way. And so we would have to ask their permission to install mitigations or measures if there was something infrastructure-wise to be put in. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we've approached them and asked them specifically for anything in particular. Um, so it's possible. We just have to discuss those with C dot and see what their uh, what their take is on it.
Okay. I'll email you about a specific intersection I have.
Appreciate it.
Counselor Maestri, did you have one other thing?
Yeah. You know, Chief, I'm sorry you have to come up here and give us all that data because there's nobody on this diast that doesn't think the police department isn't doing their job. You know, when we have uh, a reduction in um, charges and sentencing and conviction rates, um, that doesn't help you at all. Um, and that's really what people, we, that, that shows um, society that they're going to lack consequences for the crimes that they're committing. And so they just keep hammering us, society, they keep hammering the police department. And until those laws change um, and revert back to some of the more harsher um, consequences, we're going to continue to have this, whether we have five hundred police officers or we have two hundred police officers. And so um, I, I just hope you just don't think that we don't think you're doing your job. Um, and we know that you're working really hard and like I thought that the photo enforcement would alleviate some of the manpower and yet still be cost-effective uh, for us to enforce. Uh, so I, I just want you to not think that we're not supportive of, of the PD and do, we do wish we could do more for you, but until they change a lot of the laws and the sentencing and the convictions and all of that, we're all gonna uh, suffer for that.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't mean to give you the impression. I thought uh, that this is a public forum. I know it's, I know it's put out on Zoom. And I was presenting that data for your edification as well as everybody who's watching or attending the meeting tonight. It wasn't meant to indicate that I didn't think you think our officers work hard and are doing a good job. So I appreciate that.
Want you to know, we do appreciate our officers. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, I appreciate both of your um, input for the speed deterrence and um, we look forward to working together to prevent fatalities. Seeing no other questions or comments, then I will conclude this work session at six fifty-two. We're going to take a ten-minute recess before we start the regular meeting. It's normally about ten minutes and we'll pick up um, at the regular meeting around seven.